Good morning, everyone. Today is a very brisk October 9th, 2018. It's 9:00 a.m. This is a regular meeting at the Taos County Board of Commissioners. We welcome everyone for being here today. I hereby call this meeting Jordan. Court Call Roque.
Chairman Thampro.
President.
Vice Chair Gagoz.
President.
Mr. Romero.
President.
Mr. Blakenhardt.
President.
Mr. O'Donnell.
President.
Everyone will stand for item number three. Mr. O'Donnell doesn't have anybody, but the United States is about to feel the impact of two hurricanes. I don't know if everyone has heard, one on the west coast, one on the east coast. And I think maybe a moment of positive thoughts to those people that their lives are going to be impacted by the two that are about to hit and the one that did a lot of damage recently.
Also, Mr. Chairman, we keep in our prayers and our thoughts, Parker Tien, he's a constituent from Carson. He got sick a couple of days ago, and he's having a hard time just trying to get things to be without her. So, keep him in our prayers and keeping those of us, all of those who suffer also, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, from health problems and issues with regards to our health, to keep all those individuals in our prayers for comfort and God.
Thank you. Please make it happy, Sheriff Over. Would you leave us alone?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Next item on the agenda, Commissioners, is approval of the agenda. Motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and second to approve the agenda as presented. Court Call Roque.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagoz.
Here.
Chairman Thampro.
Yes. Under item six, awards of recognitions, I take the recognition of two graduates, Kyden Rhodes and Mckenna Machetto from the New Mexico Department of Public Safety Telecommunications, class number 140. Their supervisor, Mr. Vallee Martinez, our E901 director, will make the presentation.
Hey, Doc. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Cordova. I just wanted to recognize a couple of our dispatchers today. Eric Ma. We have one absent today. Actually, she had taken annual leave and is hunting today, so hopefully.
Well, that goes well.
Hopefully, it goes well as well. But we do have Nikaida Machetto here today. And I just want to recognize both these dispatchers. The first time in a while that we've actually sent two dispatchers to the academy at the same time, Nikaida and Kyden Rhodes. They both graduated top five in the class. I believe Nikaida was number four in the class, and actually Kyden Rhodes was tied for the valid victory in the class. So, I just felt it a little special today to recognize them in front of the commission and let the commission know that, you know, the application process that we have here and the selection process that we have works really well, and we're getting really good staff to come and work for us. Nikaida's a local from Taos, born and raised here, and she does give the dispatch right away.
I do, I do.
And I just wanted to recognize both of them today. They say Kyden's not here, but I wanted to recognize both of them, Commissioner, in case we make errors.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Taos County for giving me the opportunity to help people in a different way. I was a medical assistant for six years prior to taking the job, but I would not change the job for the world.
Well, thank you. You're the first part of first responders. None of that happens, what the sheriff does, what the ambulance does, what the fire department does, none of that happens without you being there, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Next will be a presentation recognizing the Chama Sol Reuse Center for receiving a collaborative partnership program of the year award from the New Mexico Recycling Coalition. And then it will be followed by a presentation of community service works to Jean Nichols, Alan Siegel, Gloria Meestas, and the volunteers for their work. This will be spearheaded by Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering if we could table this to see if Ms. Nichols is running late and so I would make a motion to, at this point, just table both of the items until later time during this meeting.
To a non-specific time, and then we'll interrupt and give votes in case they care. Or finish the presentation of whatever's going on, and then see what happens.
Yes, thank you.
That would be the motion.
I'm glad that we can do that.
Do I hear a second?
A second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, a second to postpone items B and C from the item six to a non-specific time later in the agenda. Court Call Roque.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagoz.
Here.
Chairman Thampro.
Yes. Okay, next item on our agenda, citizens concerned. Any citizen wishing to address the commission? We ask that you come up, state your name, and keep your comments to five minutes or less, and no action can be taken regarding your comments today, but staff of you can touch you through some other side of the meeting.
My name is Stephanie, and I'm here about a noise ordinance that's starting to be in process.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Basically, I'll just keep it short. I have some information. I have just met the lawyer who is in charge of putting together the documents for submission. So, basically, I'm just letting you know that I'm here, I'm still on it. I wanted to know that everybody had indeed received the copies of the noise ordinance from the town that I sent to everybody on the commission.
Yes.
So, okay. And I guess that's it. I'm just here still on it, and going to deal with the lawyer and send him the documents. All right, thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else wishing? Mr. Philkey. If this is a meeting, so I can give you the entire five minutes as a punishment, so we'll see how it goes.
I'll accept that.
All right. State your name.
Thank you. After the last meeting, I had one or two emails that came to all the Commissioners that was blocked, and I'd like to have some sort of administrative answer to that. It all came back with Damian cannot deliver, and I felt like it was a blagging anyways.
You know, I get so many emails from you, and there's no way anything was blocked.
Mr. Chairman, I'll look into it. I'm not sure why that happened, Mr. Philkey. I'll look into it and see if there's an issue that we have to address.
Thank you. I don't think it's in.
Felicity.
I don't think it's happening currently, but it was then anyways. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Here in the other seat now, we'll go ahead and go on. We thank everyone for being here with us today.
Mr. Chairman, could we bring back the awards presentations?
Motion to bring items B and C back to the meeting.
With you, you need a little more time. All right, well, I withdraw that.
Let's approve the minutes, and then we'll go.
Okay.
Item eight is the minutes approval of the September 4th, 2018 regular commission meeting minutes. Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
A second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, a second to approve the September 4th, 2018 regular commission meeting minutes. Court Call Roque.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagoz.
Martin.
Chairman Thampro.
Yes. Item B is approved. Yeah, he said yes. Item B is approval of the September 11th, 2018 special commission meeting minutes. Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
A second.
Motion, a second to approve September 11th, 2018 special meeting minutes. Court Call Roque.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagoz.
Yes.
Chairman Thampro.
Yes. Item C is approval of September 18th, 2018 regular commission meeting minutes. Motion to approve.
A second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, a second to approve regular meeting minutes of September 18th, 2018. Court on roll.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagoz.
Yes.
Chairman Thampro.
Yes. Thank you, Court's Office, for everything as presented. Appreciate it. Not yet? Okay. There we go. Perfect timing. Commissioner O'Donnell, would you like to make a motion to bring items B and C into the meeting?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and I was able to bring my B and C back.
A second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Court on roll.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt.
Yes.
Chairman Thampro. Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Chair Gagoz.
He's just...
Chairman Thampro.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell, this time the floor is yours.
Yes, I'm wondering if you need for the presentations.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, the first one is recognition of the Chamisol Reuse Center for their award they received from the New Mexico Recycling Coalition at a conference a couple weeks ago, and this is the award presented. Cheerios on the back. And it reads, "The New Mexico Recycling Coalition recognizes the Chamisol Reuse Center as the collaborative partnership program of the year, inspiring New Mexicans to reduce, reuse, and recycle." And the reason they got this is because it was not only Taos County leadership, it was Taos County solid waste, it was the New Mexico Environment Department, the U.S. Forest Service, that all worked together to formulate rules and procedures. So, we all worked together to make this happen. So, I want to thank the commission for allowing it to happen. And so, I'd like Jean to come up and receive the award again. And if you could join me, Mr. Chairman, we have several community service awards we'd like to give out, and... The first one will go to Jean Nichols, and it reads, "Moss Community Dog and the many volunteers at the Chamisol Reuse Center, through his steadfast commitment to serve the Viñasco area communities, has significantly reduced items disposed in landfills. In the past year of operation, it has demonstrated to be a model volunteer program for other communities." So, I'd like to again give this award to Jean Nichols.
Of course, I have to rush right back to go to the reuse center.
And the second one goes to Gloria Meestas. She is not here today. The third one, community service award, goes to Alan Siegel. Alan, if you could come up. Alan has been instrumental in making repairs to the building, helping out, I think even cleaning. So, Alan, thank you so much, and could give this to Gloria. Thank you so much.
And this one would be presented to Mr. Will Philkey. This is for all the volunteers that helped the reuse, and since you're here, could you please give them our appreciation and take that in? We'll email it to you.
And Alan, yes.
We'll email it to you, so we can get the...
Alan and Will are also volunteer at the reuse center, so Alan, if you'd like to come up. All right.
Oh.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you all. Jean.
Of course, I have to go back. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next item on your presentations, item nine. This will be an 1199 Legislative Strategy for Pursuing Excess Street Pounds for Hospital. Be presented by the President of District 1199, Sharon Arterbreit.
How are you? Very good, very good.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Taos County Commissioners, and Mr. Cordova. Thank you very much for allowing me to come and talk about our vision. I am Sharon Arterbreit, the new president of District 1199 of the National Union of Hospital and Healthcare Employees. As I mentioned last month, we represent more than 300 of the direct healthcare workforce at Holy Cross Medical Center. On behalf of them all, I thank you for the time to present the following outline of plan to secure much needed additional funding from the state legislature in 2019. The hospitals in New Mexico, particularly the rural hospitals, are facing difficult financial times. The Taos News recently reported that the Holy Cross Medical Center was concerned about the hospital's future, and the CEO made it clear the need for help. Quote, "Without additional help from our community, I don't think it is possible, and it's a reasonable expectation that on our own, Holy Cross will be financially independent." End quote. With several years of consistently low numbers of days cash on hand, a critical measure of hospital liquidity, and having gone through stretches of months of late payments to vendors, not to mention the need last year for emergency loan to make payable, Holy Cross is barely outside the definition of constructive abandonment, a measure in state regulations that could invite the Department of Health to look at receivership status for the hospital. And just recently, Holy Cross has been planning for a reduction in hours for the hospital's staff to deal with yet another loss, net loss in revenue for the hospital. Holy Cross is not alone when it comes to these financial problems. For the past three years, there have been numerous articles on the struggles of rural hospitals. For example, in January of 2018, an article published in The Atlantic entitled "America's Rural Hospitals Are Dangerously Fragile," it was reported that, quote, "Hospitals have been struggling, especially independent public and/or nonprofit hospitals located in smaller cities and rural towns. And with the new tax legislation and events like the merger of the drugstore chain, CVS, and the insurance, Aetna, the turmoil looks to get worse. It is not acceptable to wait for someone else to save our health system. I also want to stress the importance of our local hospitals and clinics to the economy of every county in the state. New Mexico's hospitals comprise a mix of not-for-profit, non-governmental, for-profit, government facilities, but regardless of the type of ownership or board composition, all of these hospitals have a similar common denominator, a robust effect on the economies of the communities in which they operate. The National Rural Health Association recently wrote about just such an effect in an article entitled "Rural Hospitals: The Beating Heart of a Local Community." Quote, "A hospital is often the centerpiece of economic viability in rural America, providing jobs for a community's residents and resources for its development. The positive impact of a thriving hospital starts at the heart of nearby towns and stretches across many miles, providing a vital boost to families and local businesses in the surrounding region," unquote. And according to the American Hospital Association, quote, "The goods and services hospitals purchase from other businesses create additional economic value for the community, with these ripple effects included each hospital supports about two additional jobs, and every dollar spent by a hospital supports roughly $2.30 of additional business activity. As I stated a moment ago, we cannot wait in hoping someone else will act. They haven't. While this is a national problem, we cannot wait for Congress to act. They haven't, and likely won't in any serious manner. So, for New Mexico, the time for action is now, and the place is at the Roundhouse. Here are five areas we have outlined for developing a legislative plan to ensure our hospitals and health system survives and transitions to the future by properly planning. Planning that involves all stakeholders and requires the utmost transparency. Over the next few weeks, we will be meeting with legislators seeking to do the following. Number one, create a new model for emergency loans from the state for operational budgets for hospitals which develop five- and ten-year plans for transitional growth. The plans would need to be developed with participation of the community hospital and healthcare advisory group, which would include representation of county council councils and approval of county commissioners. Fund the new revolving emergency loan program with $40 million. Number two, provide a strategy, provide statutory changes in the job training incentive program, J-TIP, to clearly provide use of the program by hospitals, clinics, and other home visit healthcare programs. Provide an additional $15 million for job training, transitional assistance, to put more nurses and support staff to work in hospitals, clinics, and outreach home visit healthcare programs. Number three, provide for a legislative request of the New Mexico Hospital Equipment Loan Council for suggestions and ways the council could expand its mission for transitional needs of healthcare institutions. Number four, establish requirement for patient-family advisory committee at hospitals, with state funding to assist the advisory committees in studying quality of care and developing plans for improvement. Fund this with $3 million, available to the advisory committee in grants up to $60,000 annually. And number five, provide counties with additional money for development and implementation of transitional healthcare plans, incorporating community health needs assessment and implementation strategies, with community hospitals acting as a hub for acute, primary, and preventive care services. Priority given to plans which include participation in medical, participation of medical teaching institutions. Fund available to counties $65 million. Total new state funding set aside from the projected $1.2 billion revenue surplus would be $123 million. For the first time in many years, there are additional state revenues available. We know there are other important needs for the state, including a sound reserve and rainy day fund, as well as long overdue additional funding for education. But there is enough new revenue to also deal with the needs of hospitals, especially rural hospitals like Holy Cross Medical Center. In conclusion, I want to make it perfectly clear that while we're proposing the above five-point plan, we are certain there are other great ideas to be reviewed, and we stand ready to support reasonable, responsible, inclusive ideas. But we all need a starting point. So, I would like to take questions, suggestions, now or at any time in the future, on how we could collaborate. And if you wish to meet me at the Roundhouse and petition the legislators, I was in Las Cruces yesterday, so I'm available to get these monies. And that's what I aim to do, and keep your hospital, the economic engine of Taos, and provide good care for all your citizens. Thank you very much for your time on the agenda.
Mr. Blakenhardt. Thank you, Chairman. Well, thank you for coming in and giving us this outline of what you're going to be lobbying for. I think they're all really have a lot of promise and, you know, certainly forthright. Actually, none of them addresses the issue of building reserves for the hospital, which really is the issue. Loans won't do it, and committees, and training, you know, they're all good goals for long-term possibilities, but they don't get to the crux of the problem, which is needing to build reserves.
Thank you, Commissioner Blakenhardt. I've taken some votes, and we're just beginning this process to seek not significant funding to shore up our resources. So, at any point, we will start. So, thank you for your input. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Have you found a sponsor for the proposed legislation?
No, have not yet. We're just beginning. I did speak with a legislator in Las Cruces, like I mentioned. We have several initiatives, so this is the most recent and comprehensive. So, we're just beginning to build our...
I would check with Representative Bobby Gonzalez to see if he would be willing to sponsor or co-sponsor and give his opinion on... These are basically changes to the hospital funding, which you say requires a statutory change. He may have other suggestions. I think the emergency loan program's a good thing, but then always there's an interest rate, and hospitals have to pay back. I think you need to put an actual dollar amount and make sure that whoever sponsors that has input and actually begin drafting the legislation now, so that it can be reviewed by... There are drafters who will do that for you if you vet it with someone at the Capitol. So, I would encourage you to at least see if Representative Gonzalez would be a sponsor, but also for him to kind of analyze and see if there might be something additional that could help, because, I mean, even the $65 million, we're not... Are we talking about all the counties, or are we talking just those that have their rural hospitals? How many are we talking about?
Well, that would include the hospitals that have their five- and ten-year strategic plans all over New Mexico. So, it is a long, low interest, would be paid back. So, I do... So I do think of your representative, Bobby Gonzalez, and we will be reaching out to him. And drafting of the bill is happening this month.
And who's drafting that?
Well, we're still working as a committee, taking lots of different ideas. So within District 1199 and outside advisors.
Okay, still might be good to get the legislative drafters in right away.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll keep you posted.
Okay, next item on the agenda, Commissioners, is the consent agenda. I will brief the items. On the consent agenda, and the President has issued a light item to be pulled, we'll discuss that as the next meeting. Item A is a request for approval of DFA Resolution Number 6, 2018-19 fiscal year resolution, requesting to adjust final budget to account for the minimum of senior employment program contract between Tous County and NC-NM-EDD non-metro agency, area agency on aging, extending the employment contract through March 31, 2019. Item B is DFA Resolution Number 7, 2018-19 fiscal year, a resolution requesting to adjust final budget to establish the budget for general adjudication fund grant agreement number 19J30 to hire temporary position to assist DWI team coordinator and transfer temporary cash from general fund. Item C is approval of the DFA Resolution Number 8, 2018-19 fiscal year, a resolution requesting to adjust final budget to establish a budget properly account for the revenue expenditures of Series 2018 County Education Gross receipts Tax Improvement Revenue Bonds issued to Tous County in August 2018. Item D is approval of DFA Resolution Number 9, 2018-19 fiscal year resolution, requesting to adjust final budget to increase expenditures from E911 Cash Balance Reserve Fund as approved during the E911 Board Meeting and according to operational expenses identified by E911 Director. Item G is request for approval of budget adjustment for Healthcare Assistance Fund 0220-1940. Item M is request for approval of budget adjustment for Penasco Fire District 0209-1557. Item J is request for approval for a budget adjustment for County Conflicts Fund 0101-1150. Item H is request for Contract Amendment Number 1, Senior Employment Program by and between Tous County and NC-NM-EDD non-metro area agency on aging, extending the employment contract through March 31, 2019. Original contract was $9,432. Amendment total now is $14,602. SCP contract amount $24,044. Item I is approval of increase for food expense in the amount of $12,998.50 to Tous County Senior Program through CBS contract for remainder of fiscal year 2018-19. Total amount of contract with the increase will now become $112,605.20. Item J is request for approval of budget adjustment for Project Manager 0101-1120. Item K is approval of out-of-state travel for undersheriff Stegnia and Deputy Mauro Rosales to attend Tap Flow Academy in Phoenix, Arizona from October 22, 2016, 2018. That is the consent agenda as read, Commissioners. I seek a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to set a motion for approval of all items. We could pull out item J. It's a little vague, is the...
Okay.
Project Manager J.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item D.
And my motion to pull out both items J and D.
Okay, D by Commissioner O'Donnell will be heard after J by Commissioner O'Donnell. Clerk Calhoun.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhorst.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
No.
Chairman Beber.
Yes. Item J, request for approval of budget adjustment for Project Manager 0101-1120. Commissioner O'Donnell.
So, Mr. Chairman, just a request for approval of a budget adjustment for Project Manager. I know we have a few projects going on in the county, so I was just kind of wondering which one exactly this one represents.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So Project Manager is funded from the general fund. We allocated $10,000 for maintenance contracts. He has no reason to enter into maintenance contracts at this time. So he's asked for the $10,000 to go into supplies for the different projects he's working on, to buy the smaller things like piping, electrical tape, and wiring and stuff like that. So it's a $10,000 move from maintenance contracts to supplies.
I see. What about the overall county?
Overall, from projects.
I see.
And no increase in funds?
No, increase in funds, just transfers.
Okay, okay. Move for approval.
All right, motion to approve the request for approval of budget adjustment for Project Manager 0101-1120, Mayor Second and Clerk Calhoun.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhorst.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chair Beber.
Yes. Okay, item D, approval of DFA Resolution Number 9, 2018-19 fiscal year resolution requesting to adjust final budget to increase expenditures from E911 Cash Reserve Fund approved during the E911 Board Meeting and according to operational expenses. Commissioner O'Donnell.
If you could just detail what the $73,000 would be used for.
Yes, so DFA Resolution Number 9 moves some cash into operational uses identified by our E911 Director for some software needs and amounts of $10,000 for other contractual services that I have broken down in $55,000 and for some maintenance of our equipment that we have throughout the county in the amount of $8,000. All in all, we're asking for $73,000 to come from our cash reserve in the E911 Money Fund. We have sufficient cash balance to do the expenditure transfers that we are requesting at this time.
Wasn't your money already set aside for maintenance and repairs? Contract for '55 versus a new contract?
It would be a new contract. So during the budget preparation, we mentioned that the contract would expire in December 2019. So now that the contract's up for expiration, we need to enter into new contract for advanced communications and for motor row law and for the spill-in analytics that we have in place.
December 2018?
19, it expires, so we're just getting ready for the contract reset.
And what is the $10,000 for the software?
So the software purchase, he did a really good presentation during the E911 Board Meeting. I can share that with you. But basically, it's for the connectors. I forget the actual terminology, but it's to add a little bit more security to the network.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, basically we have a firewall because we should just have to need to upgrade or actually replace that firewall with a new one so that we can have more access in matters from, you know, different models and different initiatives going forward that requires that secure access of enforcement and the gym.
And Director, any approval?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve. I'll second Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Russell and Savage approve DFA Resolution Number 9, adjusting the final budget expenditures for E911 cash as explained. Clerk Calhoun.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhorst.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chair Beber.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11, under County Management, what happens first item is update county commissioner of various items of Tous County.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the first item I'll talk about today is the update from the Tous Health Systems Board Meeting we had last week, Wednesday night. I also attended the finance of committee meeting, which was an extended meeting due to a draft presentation of their audit. A lot of very useful, valuable information that was presented to us in regards to the audit. Audit is a little bit behind schedule this year as opposed to years of the past because they are really, you know, working on the details of that audit going into the, what they call, going concern. The going concern is basically the overall operations of the hospital, how they're continuing to operate, how they'll be able to operate into the future. Typically, your audits are looking back and they've done a pretty good job of looking back as always, but this year because of the concerns of the hospital, the going concern is looking at where we are currently right now and how we intend to get out of the problems that we're in going forward and whether there should be a going concern. As we all know, there's still some difficulties going on over at the hospital. Lot has improved in terms of expenditures. They've done a lot to build, find the efficiencies on the expenditure side, but we're continuing to wrestle with the ability to do better billing and bring in better revenues. And so that is essentially the going concern focus, is really looking at revenue billing, making sure we're getting the most out of our billing and that we're receiving our billing on the first go-round, on the first try as opposed to being rejected and having to go back out again multiple times. So the board approved a request from management to hire a third-party billing company. They will come in essentially for a two-year contract where they will oversee the billing department of the hospital. All the staff will remain hospital staff. But this third-party would provide guidance and management of how to do the billing, how to train our staff or the hospital to do this billing and be able to continue doing it in two or three years as this company might be facing now. It's a great initiative. I personally wish we would have done it six months ago. That's what I told the CPO myself. I think it's a good idea to move that balance sheet item from accounts receivable to cash. The longer we wait, the less likely we are to receive all of that AR. So definitely a good initiative to get that AR transferred over to cash. The cash on hand situation is about the same. It's gotten a little bit better by a couple of days, but for the most part, we just definitely need to look at that. Thirteen-week cash rules are still pretty tight and for the most part, we're still looking to get by paycheck-to-paycheck essentially from making payroll. It's opposite of getting a paycheck, it's how we're going to make those payrolls. So it's still a very tight struggle for the hospital. I think as they do bring in more cash from the ARs, it will help their potential reserves. Commissioner Blakenhorst mentioned, we do need to build those reserves back up. That's essential for the long-term stability of the hospital, but at this point, we're still just making sure that revenue comes in accordingly and that we're meeting each of those payrolls every two weeks. A lot of changes have happened to the hospital, we all know that. And even the auditors made the mention, just as we heard earlier in the presentation, that rural hospitals are struggling. Rural hospitals across America are struggling. We're not unique to that. We do have a couple of unique issues that we can work out on our own, that billing. Billing is huge. Once we get that straightened out, we may have a little better opportunity to keep struggling like the rest of them. But the point is, we are going to continue to struggle as a community hospital until things change in the industry, until things change around the state and around the nation. And I do think it's important that we support the Union 1199's initiatives to get more money flowing from the state down to these so-called county hospitals because it isn't something we can do on our own. As a county government, we've done what we can and we continue to do it. And we have to support it till the end, but we all obviously can't prop up an institution larger than ourselves. And I've said that before, we're not as big as the hospital even. And so, you know, what we could do is support, work with the hospital, figure out ways to improve things. We're going to definitely continue to look at options as the future goes on, but it isn't feasible for the county to go in and build and say the hospital is much larger than us. So one request of the board that I want to make sure the county commissioners aware of as we move forward towards the legislative session. Management at hospital has identified a pretty good list of capital holiday requests. Besides what we have no money for, there are unfunded needs out there still. I think the total ask is about $5 million. We have approximately $2 million no money to be able to provide for those needs, which leaves a balance. So the hospital board is requesting of the county to work with them to put together a pretty large capital request to the legislature to help fund some of these capital needs that we still have, a gap essentially. So that hasn't been finalized. I was given a list of the $5 million that's outstanding in requests. We should have that list before, it's something really new that we haven't seen. But as we go forward, I'll keep the board informed as to what that looks like and what the request is going to be and who's going to ultimately be responsible for the assets. I think there's an advantage to the county sponsoring the request, but at the end of the day, the hospital would love to be able to have those on their balance sheet for the write-off and for the ability to get that extra critical care reimbursement that they get for having these on their balance sheet. So we've come a long way, we've stowed a long way to go with the hospital. Nothing is completely fixed. I'll just be honest and say, we haven't solved the problem there. The hospital board is definitely more diligent, I believe, in trying to take on these issues that they have to take on for themselves before coming back to this body to request some more tax payrolls. They did make mention of the presentation that they gave to the board last meeting. They basically mentioned, "You guys are tough." And I agree with them, you are tough. You're a tough board, you take your role as fiduciary very seriously, and I'm proud of that. And so I've supported this board in that with the hospital board. Being a fiduciary means a lot of things and asking tough questions. And I hope they'll keep coming back. It's not like we don't want to hear from you. We certainly appreciate the work that's going on over there, but we are going to ask the tough questions. And so I think it's important that they continue to give us updates. I am now an official representative on behalf of the county of that board. Bylaws changed at last meeting to create that seat. So as an ex-official member, no holding, still need to be invited into the executive sessions and such, but I should have full access to all financials and to finance of committee. So I stopped reading questions, if there's any...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell. Leandro, with the decline in income in San Antonio, there is also a decline of patients that are using the hospital here in Tous. And, you know, if we look at what's going on in Santa Fe, Presbyterian has moved in, they built a beautiful new facility. You hear comments from a lot of Tous Angeles that they may now have another choice to go to for medical reasons. So I'm just kind of wondering if that is going to affect the Tous hospital at all and if there's a comparison of the amount of beds that are filled in this year looking back to last year.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, there is definitely comparisons of the past volume or challenge, that's the best way to put it. Volumes are down. We, I feel, have gotten pretty much, we hit the bone and cuts. There's not much left. I think we're as efficient as we're going to be on the expenditure side, so volume is what's going to drive the rebound, I guess is the best way to put it. So we are looking at increasing that volume. I don't know how to answer your question specifically. I do think it may take a toll. We've already lost quite a bit of insurance payers to Presbyterian and Espinola. Whether this is an extension of that loss is going to be unknown at this time. What I do feel confident about is there's great people working at hospital. At the end of the day, you have good, solid nurses, doctors. The staff over there do their best. They try hard to, you know, provide services to the people that we all serve. And I think for the most part, the quality of service does come out as a positive. So that's their ultimate goal. I think if they continue that, they should be able to get some volume back. But it is going to be important to always focus on that volume. Just like everyone else, they're praying for a wet winter. There's no hiding the fact that, you know, they get a bump in volumes through the ski season. So they're all, they're definitely looking forward to that, hoping that we have a wet winter that continues to give them that extra volume that we didn't get last year. So I don't know, I specifically answered your question, but it is going to be a tougher environment with more opportunities for especially the insurance payment, to be able to choose who they want to see.
So do you have numbers, actual numbers, to compare on patient block from last year to this year?
They did provide us the financial community numbers. It does, like I said, the volume dropped off slightly over last year. This time, this isn't the busiest time of the year anyway. So they had some pretty good ones in the spring where volume typically was lower and they had higher volume in the spring that helped out a few months of positives. Over the summer, though, it looked about flat for last year. And so, you know, I could share those with you guys. I think I could continue to start sharing those financials with you guys so you could look at them, but for the most part, it just looks at year to year. And so it doesn't tell the whole picture for the future.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
So you are the official rep, an ex-official member... So you are the official rep, an ex-official member that does not have voting rights. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And they changed their bylaws to include that?
Among other changes, but yes, that was a previous staff who changed their bylaws that were approved at the last meeting.
And will the audit become a public document?
Upon completion and acceptance of the board's... Well, actually, I need to double-check that. I'm not positive about that. The 990s for the tax that definitely gets generated from the audit and the 990s are public. So I have to double-check that. I don't know.
I think with their secrecy laws, it wouldn't become public, but I'm curious.
I will double-check on that and let you know. If nothing else, I can certainly start lobbying for the ability to share it with this board. I think it's valuable information for you guys as a board to have. I'll be honest, the biggest takeaway I had from the drafts was a pretty significant change in net asset, a loss of net asset. Ultimately, our goal every year is to increase our net asset. And so to me, that was a significant concern for me as an individual to see that increase in net asset. And then the substitution of it is AR as opposed to cash. You know, last year at this time, there was cash and now you can now have AR on the balance sheet. That's not the same. That's a concern to me. So I think if going forward, the goal should be to increase net asset again and get that backup reserves being the most important component of that net asset.
Was there any discussion on whether the hospital will respond to the RFP for detox? And they have that building on Cebu where they have the health cancer support. They have that whole building. Do you know if they own that building?
I believe so, but I don't know for sure. I'd have to look into it.
Have a mortgage on that? I'm just curious if there was a way to somehow help with office space? Some way we could do that to lessen their debt? Because it would seem like they have a number of office spaces. But that building comes to mind that they're housing that cancer support in there. And would there be a way to reduce that cost?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell. They do rent a few different buildings on county sites where they own. There has been discussion about some of those leases. The board did ask them tough questions regarding a lease near the hospital and even waited a month to approve the renewal of that lease. The answers were basically at this time, if the hospital doesn't have the ability to look outside of what's existing, the leases are important for them to continue operating. And so in order to, like, I think what you're asking is if they could swap out lease for a mortgage or get into something that they don't own. Right now, you know, right now wouldn't be the opportune time for them to look at that because of the situation they're in with their cash reserves. Vice Chair Gago.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to have a chat with you. Just a simple question. In your experience now with that board meeting that you've been going through, what's your confidence level? I mean, are you, are we hitting number? We're hearing now we're trying to move. Do you feel comfortable or confident that we're going to see light yet? It's been a year. It's been almost two years now. We've been waiting for something to change. And I don't know where we're at at the time. And I'd really like to, you know, be a fantastic guy and let you know what you see.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair Gago. So I'll be very honest. In Canada, I think they're moving in the right direction. I believe the board's awake now and asking a lot of good questions. Definitely pushing on the subjects that they really need to push on, primarily billing and setting goals and deadlines for management and staff to meet some of those goals of transferring AR into cash. Like I said earlier, I would have preferred to see this kind of initiative six months ago, but it's happening now. I don't know if I'm qualified enough to say there's a light at the end of the tunnel. I will at this time bring up that I have been talking to an advisory firm out of Chicago that does specialize in hospitals. And I am very close to considering bringing them in front of the full board so that you guys could ask some of these tougher questions of some experts in the field. I've learned a lot from them. And I do understand that there's a lot of different options for our hospital. The biggest advantage, I guess, is that we don't have a whole lot of debt at our hospital, but that also doesn't give us a lot of opportunity in regards to bankruptcy or some of those other options that some entities may use to restructure our sheet that has a lot of debt. So I do feel like here in November, I would like to bring that group before the board so that you guys can get a little bit more detail of the industry-type questions that I can't answer. But things have gotten a little better. I just don't know if it's a complete deed at the point where we can say we're out of the woods. We're definitely not out of the woods. That I will, I'll be honest about. We definitely have a lot of work to go. But I do feel that there's a few more things that can be done internally over there, management moves that can help solidify better revenues. And I'll continue to push on behalf of this board for better accountability on revenues and billing because if you don't know what you're bringing in, you'll never really be able to forecast forward and look at what your future's going to look like. So that is my initiative on behalf of this board is to continue to push, push, push on revenues and thoughtful expenditure cuts at this time. There's, like I said, we're kind of at the bone. If you cut too deep on the expenditures, it's very difficult to increase those revenues.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, one more question. I'm not asking you to ask. That a hospital would consider an individual that may be able to, I guess, facilitate the relationship and kind of build on the community appearance? Whether it was paid by them or Hollywood, they'll be able to figure that out. I don't know if they even got a chance to consider that or if they're not interested. I'd really like to hear your, the best thought that's even come from mine.
Mr. Chairman and Vice Chair Gago. There was slight discussion about that. I believe their initiative at this time, their focus is on billing and revenues. So this third-party that they intend to hire to bring that in is the expense that they're kind of focusing on right now. I think bringing in the revenues, bringing the cash in is probably the best investment, in my opinion, for them at this current time. Obviously, yes, you need to kind of mend some fences, so to speak, with the community and get confidence back in the customers they need for those volume increases. But definitely, very first priority is bringing cash in. And so I think that's where they're focusing their third-party investments at this time.
I think I do have some other questions, though. I'll ask one off, but I don't think it's a good, a full presentation from the middle group. I don't want to make assumptions. So I'll hold those questions from the main committee.
Thank you. Commissioner Blankenhorn. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's great having you on that board. I think you're well-suited to help out that board and you're certainly well-suited to communicate these. These things tell us which really is helpful. It's kind of an extraordinary position for a county manager to be in, but I appreciate you taking it on. Let's see, the last meeting I went to, the volumes, they had pretty nice volumes in August. I don't know if that kept up in any way or not.
I guess it would have kept up from August. Like I said, volumes seem to have changed a little prior years. Spring was good when in the past it wasn't. And so volumes are, I think, are a big one right now. Volumes is what can see some of this concern.
Volumes can certainly begin to build cash reserves. But as you say, you know, when asked whether we're out of the woods, you can't be out of the woods with 13 days' cash. You just can't. And even when you improve volumes and you start making money, it takes time to build. And you got to get up to 30 to 60 to be healthy.
Yeah, and we're a bit architist. Close to 100, 120, these cash are for a size, hospital size, maybe 150 to more for a bigger hospital.
Trying to keep the federal law just to stay hopeful.
I understand.
And then, yeah, I was a little bit confused at the $5 million on the balance sheet so that they can take advantage of the critical access. I know that there's a, they get a bonus on depreciation as they spend capital expenditures. So is there something that we're doing that's preventing them from getting that?
No, in fact, that's how they're using the bill every money now. I mean, it goes to them, it flows through us to them, and then they put it on their balance sheet so that they can maximize their reimbursements.
Right. And the net asset drop, do you think that's just from ARs not being up?
If you really look at it, primarily the depletion of the cash reserves was a pretty big net asset that went away. And so anytime you move cash into AR, it's not as safe as having cash in the bank. Of course, you'd rather have that cash. AR is a good opportunity to make money, but it's not a sure thing. It's on your books, then you have to collect it. There's a cost to collection.
Right. And the numbers are still pretty terrible on the ARs, right? They're still around 90 days or something, and they should be at 40. Is that the...
It's dropped slightly. And they did have some really good weeks in August. So I will give them credit for bringing in some good ARs in August. They had a couple of million-dollar weeks in a row, which is always good. But that, we have a line of credit coming from the hospital. They really need to address that really soon here, too. So I know Mr. Reyes at Sentinel Bank is doing a great job of working with the hospital. He obviously has some confidence in the future of it as well. So I think they're going to get through this short-term need for cash to take down that line of credit. But that's where their money's going. This time, anytime you start to build a low reserve and you have a thing like line of credit coming, you've got to be prepared for it.
Ultimately, the ARs will turn into cash. We're not sure if it's 100% yet, but they will absolutely turn into cash. You got any sense about how many months it might take for the new contractor to get us back to 40 or whatever is industry standard?
Their goals are very ambitious. Within the next two to three months, they'd like to get where they're billing consistently and not having the problems of adding to the AR. You know, so it's a two-sided approach here. You got to chisel down the AR and then also want to make sure you're not, you're collecting on current stuff appropriately and not adding to the AR and pushing it out 30, 60, 90 days again. We've gotten over 150 days on certain ARs that that's what we need to collect now. We don't want to get into that situation again. So I think the contractor will help us stay 90 and under so we have a higher likelihood of collection.
Okay, well, we'll see how that turns out over the winter months. Those are big months. And we'll see where, if they're up from 13 days. And as you said, of course, the county is not in no position to bail the hospital out. We don't have an operational budget or any sources of revenues that would do that. Bailing out meaning getting up from 13 to 30, 45. We can't do that, but we do hold the purse strings. Do you know of any options for getting their cash reserves up other than local support?
No, not short-term. I think you got to look at all options, including any potential mergers, acquisitions, any takeaways. You got to look at everything at this point in the situation. Maran has an opportunity. They have been taking advantage of the mill levy. So there are improvements being made to the hospital. They've been spending that mill levy money over the last few months. So what the county is doing is continuing to create a marketable building, which can be a hospital for our community into the future. So that I do appreciate that they're spending the mill levy money. We're waiting for them to really spend that, put that money into the property plant and building that we needed them to improve. And they are. They're working on that.
Good. Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, you said they would be asking for approximately $3 million from, in capital outlay for the legislature?
They have a total $5 million list. And so whatever they probably can get out of mill levy money, they'll ask us for. So I'm assuming $3 million, which is roughly the difference. They may ask us to pursue the entire $5 million on that list. I'm not sure we would have the appetite to ask for the entire $5 million. I think I'll have the legislature definitely, that's a big ask. It definitely is. And I think we need to be thoughtful and prioritize what's on that list. And that would be my advice going back to them is let's prioritize and pick maybe three or four items that may not be a $5 million ask. Maybe it's a $2 million ask, but it's something that we can accomplish for next year or two.
Maybe even just a couple hundred thousand, but that would be better than nothing. I still want to go back to all their properties, okay? Because they have the billing there below, the task, physical therapy. They did major renovation when they moved from that other building that was just directly across from the hospital. I don't know if they own it, but I just see that some of their properties or leases could be divested to offset this upcoming loan, Sentinel Bank loan that's coming due this month.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell. I mentioned that is a question that the board are asking now as well. The board are definitely looking into their properties, their leases, things like that. And I don't know if there is a lot of opportunity right now. You have to sometimes have money in the bank to make these opportunities worthwhile. And that's where they're really fishing at this time. So I don't know if they're able to make big moves like that in very short-term. I think the best they can hope for is that maybe in six months from now, they have the opportunity to review all their leases again. I don't have answers to your question of a property. I could look into that and be better prepared at the next meeting.
And then the other thing I'd like, you know, look into is all their subsidiaries. Why can't they take some money from those subsidiaries to beef up the hospital balance?
And, you know, the subsidiaries actually take it. It's the other way around. The hospital by itself isn't necessarily a big use. The hospital by itself can almost self-sustain. It's the subsidiaries that create volumes to the hospital that sometimes need to be subsidized. So it's the other way around. Your subsidiaries aren't creating a big cash up. The hospital's covering some of the losses at the subsidiary level, but those are necessary to bring the volumes into the hospital. It's like a chicken and egg thing. Mr. Perakka was really good in understanding that. That was what I was hoping he would help convey to the board last meeting when he presented is it's important to have that big net in order to create the revenues that are needed at the hospital.
And at some point, I'd still like to know how many they have.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman, so they're hoping to get at least $5 million from the state legislature. What are those requests? What do they consist of? What are they for?
Capital requests, capital equipment or equipment. Things that you guys have seen in regards to the mill levy money, improvements to the building, the property plant and equipment. They have a big training contract now. I mean, they're coming through the mill levy, I believe, the roof and just making it more energy efficient in the hospital, things like that. The equipment's huge. Equipment at the hospital's expensive, so they could definitely use that. The advantage to it primarily is they don't have to spend that out of their operating funds. So anything they could get from mill levy or from capital outlay saves them investing in capital and they keep that cash for either building their reserves or to make payments.
So is that complete list available at this point?
I can share that with you guys. Yeah, I have a list. They had it out to me. I'll share that with the board.
And at one time, the building was, the ground under it was shifting on one side of the building to the other. Had to act it fixed.
I don't roll that specifically. I'll have to ask that question ahead.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I will see. All right. So moving on, Valita Community Center. I just wanted to bring the board up to speed on an issue that was brought to my attention a few weeks ago. About a month ago, I got a call from the superintendent of the hospital schools. His insurance provider was going to be doing a walk-around of all the buildings they own. And they were asking what relationships we had. The only one we could look at, come up with, was the Valita Community Center back in 1999. The county went into a 20, 25-year lease on that building. The school maintained ownership of the building. And there was a third-party, the Valita Community Center, that was managing and updating and keeping control of the building. The county hasn't really been a player in this lease for a very long time until it came up that we were part of, a partner to it. The community group that is maintaining the building from the schools decided they needed to do some pretty major renovations to the building. And they tore down two adobe walls and they shortened it up with metal posts. And by a story short, I've asked Mr. Drayner to take a look at the lease. And I've talked to the superintendent about, probably the best part of that lease is the termination clause. And we talked about how we could get out of that lease whilst we're a partner to the schools and trying to help them regain control of the building that they own. It looks like the reasoning for that back in 99 was the county needed to pass some grant funds. And the county did invest some money into the building on behalf of the schools, but we cannot maintain ownership of it. And really, I think at the end of the day... that's the force to get out of that lease. So I just wanted to bring the board up to speed on that. And something that we're continuing to take seriously, the lease does say that we are responsible for maintenance of that building. And so unfortunately, not ever being alerted of the major renovations they chose to take on, I believe gives us a pretty fair out. But we've also taken on the consideration of safety, so we've gone over there ourselves and taped off the work area with the yellow construction tape for safety and security purposes, and are trying to get the community group to expedite the repairs of that building. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that.
And Mr. Chairman, I want to add that in years past, when I had spoken with the people who manage it, and they never said there was a three-party agreement. They always maintained that it was their building. And so it was never, ever even brought up to me when I asked if we owned the building or had a part in it. So I agree with the termination, because you would have thought they'd known the contract and said, "We need some help in maintenance," and they didn't. So I, just like nobody, they either forgot that contract existed, because it was so long ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, I'm not starting one here, updated residential treatment center within the juvenile detention center space. We are moving forward on that again. CYFP has actually come to the point where they're willing to waive some of the very stringent requirements they had, are repurposing the space, and are allowing us to do simpler tasks like removing locks, removing a few doors here and there, so that we could expedite moving forward, getting that RTC and our GDC space. So just wanted to update the board on that. We will most likely have to do a new RFP for the space if we want to be able to consider an in-kind, and I do think there's an opportunity for some in-kind exchange. So I do think an RFP is the best way for us to go, so that we can get proposals on how a program of the RTC caliber in our GDC can help offset some of our workload. Maybe we could get those kids to work in our senior center and serve our seniors lunch, or work with our facilities department in the summers to maintain thirty months' inches park, or maybe even help throughout the county on veteran memorials and keeping them up to date and keeping them, you know, clean. I think there's a lot of opportunities, so we're moving forward on that. The CYFP secretary, I believe, wants to get this task completed before the end of this term of the governor's. So I find that very hopeful, so we are continuing to move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, how did you manage to turn it around?
As I understand, the meeting that I was able to set up with the secretary did help a lot. It was a lot of, maybe there was some misunderstanding of what we were able to do there. And I think unfortunately, the closing of JDC was the final door that opened up. They did not like the coexistence, and so without the juvenile detention center in operation, it has kind of changed the whole perspective. Our state does send a lot of our children that are almost in need of a secure environment out of state. And so when you find out we have a facility that is top of the line for security, and yet we're sending a lot of our kids out of state to Utah or Texas for something that we might have here in state, changed a lot of minds, I believe, that CYFP even saw an opportunity that we were trying to present all along. So I think we're just finally getting on the same page.
Well, good job, and I bet we'll have a waiting list of kids.
Hopefully, sometimes.
Wow.
Unfortunately, didn't they say they need at least two hundred beds, and we can only serve eighteen beds?
Yeah, we will have an eighteen bed capacity, but I do agree that it will be close to capacity pretty often.
Thank you. Is there, Vice Chairman, I was just asking if there's a reason you split I and C?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I just jumped in. So let me go back to I O C discussion on RFP for lobbyists. I had mentioned a few weeks back about need to move some money around. We were able to find a little bit of money to move forward, so I would like to put out an RFP here in the next few weeks for lobbyists. Keep in mind that we only need them for the sixty-day session, we're not hiring someone for a full year, we're not hiring them to go pursue outside funding, side skate funding. Did a pretty good job of staff getting I O C E D this year, so I'm very proud of our staff for doing that. So we're just looking at a contract for the two months of the legislative session, as someone to be able to help us prioritize our needs. I would like to have someone on board before we have our retreat in December, so that we can have a strategic session with the board and lobbyists who are going to be hired. So I hope that should be out by the end of this week, early next week. And by all means, please let anybody who know that might be able to respond to that RFP, put in a request, we would like all options out there, but nothing's predetermined. We definitely want someone that has the best interest of the county in mind before we move forward.
And, Mr. Chairman, in that contract, I would like to see an itemized invoice rather than generic. I'd like to know what they do and who they talk to and the time spent. So in that RFP, if we could, you know, not just a general invoice, but more of a detailed itemization of, you know, what they're doing, what committees they're going to, where they're testifying, that they're talking to, who they're having lunch with. I think that's important for us to know.
Excellent. First, Ramon?
So, Mr. Chairman, a couple of other questions about, with regards to the retreat in December, what days?
Um, we're shooting for, it's the sixth and seventh, it's the end of that first week in December, but we're shooting for right now. I have presented to our management team the year, or last week, about their involvement. So we're looking to help involve them and get them to come before the board with the presentation for each department. And then they elected me, like, a little tiny device specifically, their elected office. So we're going to do our best to organize this, so everybody gets some time to work.
And then we're, we're holding a retreat?
That's a big question, it'll probably be an accounting building, either here or maybe at the Ag Center, somewhere that we can, it'll be a county-owned building, somewhere close enough. We're not going to go out and retreat out of the county. We're going to do what we can to save our money. We're going to do what I can to facilitate, I think I can probably at this point facilitate for you guys without a third party, and I think we can get a lot accomplished over a two-day period, just can.
Okay, so for now, typically scheduled for sixth and seventh of December. And then, speaking of twenty-five-year-old leases and stuff, leases like that, like the one in Valito, the Los Cornejo was transferred station.
With the town?
With the town, at least. What is the latest on that, do you know?
The last time we talked to him was when we talked about possibly a land swap with them, so we would own it, so we don't have to continue with the lease. But I think it's still coming up, and we'll, I'm just trying to remember who had this discussion.
We, are we, we're having a joint meeting with the town for?
Yes, we scheduled a joint meeting for the eighteenth, which is next Tuesday.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Why you bring that, is that what we, we're holding a line of work now?
And so could we put that on the agenda for then?
Yeah, then we look into it, like, something happened a few years back when we did the road paint near that transfer station, and there was a question at that time about the property something to review. I can't recall exactly what it was.
Councilman Prata was still a councilman, that we, and I thought we had come to an agreement for some kind of swap, so that it would just become our permanent, but I was like, they never followed through.
So I was involved in the construction, I was kind of like an acting project manager for community development at the time, and I believe that was like in ninety-five, ninety-six.
Well, she already done one for the bridge, and they could have called you up.
And so, you know, it's, I think we're approaching that time, if it hasn't.
I don't have some thinking, it's coming up.
I will look into it, thank you, Mr. Ramon, for telling us, because I think what we own it now.
Mr. Chairman, what time is the work, joint work study with the town?
One thirty.
So it is one thirty?
Yes, and we'll be hosting here in the next year.
Anything else?
That's all I have here.
Oh, Vice Chairman.
I know you guys swayed off, and say something, something, but I thought we were talking about the RFP for legislative representation, so I want to get back to that, just to get clarification. I'm not saying that there has to be a stand-up nominee, I'm not saying that an individual that would be out there assisting or lobbying or representing the county doesn't only do it in sixty days, they have, sometimes it makes them the kind of, not where these funds are going to come from over the course of a year. So sixty-day session, yeah, you put twenty-three thousand dollars, and it's like the day they leave a lot, the work has started since now, I believe. They were legislating finance today, but it's been invested, but these have been moving around. I think this third quarter block can enter a contract on its own. We give professional service contracts all the time to enter a bid to fifty and sixty thousand dollars. I think buying somebody that can do that for us, that can meet all the needs from the sheriff department to public, by all departments, we.
Whatever that last month is.
I never thought it was that easy.
Sure, start off you.
I'm sorry, I heard you were.
Don't call me back.
So, Mr. Chairman, going to where Commissioner Baegos suggested that the lobbyists not be hired just for those sixty days, but I would imagine, I agree with them. I think that if there's an individual that's going to be hired, they need to start doing their homework since now, in advance, preparation for what's going to happen in the legislature. There's going to be some follow-up with it as well after the legislature.
Okay, noted, I understand that, I think I agree that the sooner we get a contract, the sooner we can start working, so I do agree with this prior going into it. So we could probably also extend a little past the sixty days as well. But for the most part, I believe, after the sixty days wrapped up, then we have, if we have something in the bill, I believe, I have a lot of confidence in our staff that we can finalize and follow up on the details of that in regards to communication with VFA or another agency that's distributing the money that we give people from here.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, for all of us to be on this selection process.
Can I? Selection, no.
That's out of protection for you guys.
Without the sheriff, could he be on it?
I believe it says no electees. Do you know?
What does it say, Elsa?
We will definitely look into it and get back to that, but yeah, I don't think it'd be a wise idea.
Okay, just wondering.
Vice Chairman, if I can just weigh in, one of the reasons for that is you have very few direct hires or purchases, it's the on-road and attorney hire or contract. And the reason for that is because you are the final authority for the approval of matters of the town, and it isn't really worked well to have members on the RFP panel itself.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no other question, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, item twelve, if this is to be considered a commission, meaning commissioners?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I was at the NPR TPO meeting, and even though we voted to move the handicap accessibility project, the gorge, partnering with Department of Transportation forward, they wanted formalized in a resolution, so we'll be bringing a resolution forward, hopefully next week.
Okay, so Morgan, you'll get the information to Valera?
Yes, and to Leandro and Legal.
And when is that, that's where you're going to be, the twenty-third, is that it?
Uh, yes, okay, I'm going to miss it. We'll miss you. Thank you. Can I, Commissioner's announcements?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to indicate to the commission and the public that I will be attending a board meeting at the Mexico campus. That is in Daily Beautiful, that'll be in New Mexico, and that's this, I don't know about going, the end of this week, so I will be there for a couple of days.
All hours, I'm ready for five minutes of the board, so. Okay, you got a beautiful, and you're our voting representative. I thank you for enjoying that travel.
I want to announce I attended the fiftieth anniversary of the National Trails Day and the addition of thirty-two miles in the monument.
You walked thirty-two miles in the monument?
It was a well-attended event, and by chance, I was able to have a good twenty half-hour visit with the governor. We walked the bridge and was able to talk to her about the need for more railings and explain suicides, which now, to date, this year, we've had four. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Randall, did you move up that far, is it?
I always took that, a couple more items in the middle.
Well, I, I thought I was next, I'm sorry, I was so excited.
I know.
Sorry to wake you, but we're all right right now, I'll let you know.
I'll go back to sleep.
Thank you. Item C is for discussion on a draft resolution for the Board of County Commissioners to affirm its commitment to the Paris Climate Accord, environmental sustainability and combating climate change. Commissioner, no?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would really like some input from the commission as to additional language, where, sorry, it says, Tass County's geographic location makes it particularly vulnerable to the devastating impacts of climate change. You can strike, including rising sea levels, but with drought flooding and the commitment adverse impacts on human health and the environment. And here, the whereabouts, such as the use of renewable solar energy, reducing gas emissions, reducing water usage, transitioning its fleet to energy-saving vehicles. This is where I would like some more input, I'd like to add the forest thinning, and anything else that you may think of. I think maybe some language that we support U and M for their educational classes on, solar training. And I'm wondering if.
The high schools as well.
The Kit Carson representative might have just a few, some input on the language on, additional language relating to specifics.
Also, as I told you before the meeting, there is a honors class at our high school on renewable energy. I have students up that class in my house, I'd like to run this by him, see if he has some comments. Mike, thanks for being here today.
Commissioner, yes, I would really recommend you go with the high school, because I think his name is Andy Leonard, is in One Mass, the professor of high school. He teaches a lot of solar, renewable, biomass, something of that sort. We also encourage you to incorporate more solar into the county, and Kit Carson is working on it, and that is a lot of solar.
And does he still have training for solar? Should we include encouraging our local? And does he still have training for solar? Should we include, um, encouraging our local educational system to?
So I think PPC solar and solar are getting wind in the house to create solar projects and employment for, or employment training for solar and maintenance of utility, utility grade solar and as well as same to the EV stations and Tesla charging stations.
And I think the electric vehicles is a little premature. Do you have any at Kit Carson?
We do not, but we just got eight charging stations from Tesla and two universal charging stations that we plan on dispersing through the county.
Cool.
So I, I just don't know if that language is.
Commissioner, I'll, I'll give that to my son to take to his class and let's see if we can get some comments from them and, and that would be kind of a partnership that would be pretty cool.
I would definitely encourage an EV charging station kind of a deployment plan, mainly for tourists, people from Colorado, people from around the country that really rely on batteries for charging their EV cars.
And I hear that's not too expensive if the county were to do that, except for maybe some switch to power. I mean, the real expense is in the peo, the cost of to charge it. Is that correct?
Yes, it all depends on what charger you use, but I recommend that to think of it as more of a marketing way to bring people to the county as far as seeing the different sites, knowing that there's a charger there and if we can somehow incorporate it on a website. So if you're a Tesla driver and if you're going to travel to New Mexico, you know that there's a charger there waiting for you instead of with the possibility of you trying to put in your car somewhere else, like a gas station or something.
Where here would you recommend in a county on the building?
Mainly where the super fast chargers probably take about forty-five minutes to charge, forty-five minutes to an hour. So anywhere they can have lunch or anywhere that they can see the sights, I would definitely recommend that.
Cool.
Thank you.
Now, this, this thing references our intent to get out, and we've already done it, right? I mean, we've already withdrawn from the Paris Accord and, um, I'm all for every, everything we can do, you know, any initiative we can come up with, reduce carbon, cover the outside and working with Kit Carson. I love the fact that you guys are doing your solar thing. I'm all for pursuing that, but I, I don't get this. We've already gotten out of the Paris Accord and this is based on some intention to do so.
Well, this is just a statement that other, that counties don't agree with that and that we're going to do our part to reduce climate change in any way we can.
We should, we should do our part, but the, uh, we've already gotten out of this thing. You could change the language to say that whereas the United States is no longer part of the Paris Accord and we want them to be.
Okay.
We can do that.
Okay.
I mean, to me, it's kind of a separate issue. The Paris Accord is like history and we're looking forward and, and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm all for all the educational and actual on the ground initiatives we can do to reduce the footprint. Well, I'll get this to Mr. Leonard's class if you think of anything else. Mike, let me know.
Uh, Commissioner's turn. I would definitely recommend pairing with Kit Carson because our initiative really caters for every member. So if you pay an electric bill, you're part of renewable energy as far as if you're doing rooftop solar. It just allows all of our members and all the county members to participate in renewable energy and, and kind of help the environment and moving forward for our kids and our future generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, item D is a request for actual reimbursement for Chairman Power to attend multi-line, uh, board conference retreat October sixteenth through nineteen in Berlio. Um, Ranelle, since we started this on Wednesday, it's found out, they will reimburse me. So we don't need to do it, but I left it on because we need that in discussion regarding, I know our per diem rates are set by the state and we can't really do anything about that. But what I have found out is because you run into this and you hear a lot of complaints from employees, that, um, the eighty-five dollars that they get doesn't cover the room, which leaves them no money for food. So I would, there's a way of the, um, policy that we can redo it to stay or, um, actual expenses. If it's tied to something like this, like the room is a hundred and nineteen dollars a night at this, um, retreat that, that, what they call retreatments are multi-line work come joint meeting. And, um, for eighty-five dollars, I mean, I'm already in the whole forty-five dollars and haven't eaten a bite. Not that I'm not missing meals, but so we need a discussion and I spoke to Commissioner Bell about this as well and pretty interesting. And I, I found out through the town is they have something that says eighty-five dollars or actual if at conference site or something like that. So I would like to see us explore that chain because having to front six hundred dollars on your hotel room to get reimbursed a few weeks later is a little tough. And so, um, but I think we're now for checking with Association of Counties because there has been a change in personnel. When I call like the reservations, they were charging a credit card grant down.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, like for this meeting that's going to take place with the, uh, multiple, doesn't the Association of Counties, um, rent or without a, a block of rooms?
Yes, we have to make our own reservations these times. I think that's why this was definitely, we've never had to do this. I don't know what has changed.
Usually the Association of Counties pays to rent.
Yeah, they're not this time. They didn't get reimbursed. So we're all hung out. So we're good.
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I can get with, uh, Mr. Martinez. Take a look at our policies existing and see what other options there are out there and see what. I understand the concern. I hear it from our employees all the time as well, um, especially when it's a mandatory training. You're sending someone to it and they can't make it through the week, it, it is tough. So I understand that, uh, you're right, the state does set the rates and so we've been balancing those standards for a long time. But you understand the options and actions, so we're looking to put those options.
Commissioner Bell.
Because if I understand correctly, currently everything now has to come to the county manager for approval for actuals or the county commission. So if there was a way, it would be right in the language of the policies and procedures that would expedite, it wouldn't take up so much time of voting on these actuals every time. Um, I don't know, but it, I mean, currently that's, there's a process. So if what you say might be able to use works, I think it would expedite things as well. And then, do you need a vote on this?
No, 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 since Wednesday of last week when the gen items were due, we, Ranelle has found out. I will be getting reimbursed from the counties.
At the one nineteen room or, I mean, that's. I mean, it seems like we need to make a motion for this, otherwise unless the county manager can just authorize it, but he.
No, I'm not seeking reimbursement from the county anymore. We're now found out that the Association of Counties will be reimbursing.
I see. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I just think we need to look at that and try to update something and maybe our lobbyists, whoever that is, if we could ever do that, maybe do work on that because that eighty-five dollars is just really unrealistic. I did a lot of research recently. We sent employees to Albury. I didn't find a room during the state fair that they could have stayed for eighty-five dollars through expedia or other side. So I just think we need to look at something because that is a state issue. It's not, it's not just what I have to come up with. So I guess we don't have this radio here, so we all hold it. We proceed on item thirteen, which is a discussion for proposal ordinance nuisance making, which is presented by our chairman, Mr. Grant. Hi, item.
Hi, I just realized I have this item, so I needed to get down here. So, um, this item arises out of some, um, two areas, some internal discussions with staff and complaints from citizens that have been being made recently about issues that exist in their neighborhoods. Um, this draft is just that, it's basically tossing out for discussion all issues that we could abate nuisances on. Some things will, it, it all is going to have to be designed to be workable and effective within, uh, the county of Tallas. Some of these came from the city of Albuquerque. They're designed for a city environment. Obviously, we live in a county environment, but we have neighborhoods that are, that are urban and we have neighborhoods and, and a lot of area that is very rural. Um, the most important thing, as I've said in the past with doing an ordinance like this, is to not simply throw something on the books that we can feel good that we've passed an ordinance about, but then not have the resources to, to implement it. Um, and the, the resources, just to give you some idea, uh, currently, uh, in the last budget cycle, the city of Albuquerque had a budget for, uh, abating such nuisances, uh, that are mentioned in this ordinance of five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, County Bernal Leo had a hundred thousand dollar budget, which they felt was insufficient, but that's the money they had. And that's the issue is how much money can be resourced for this purpose for both, uh, hiring and training employees sufficient to enforce it. And secondly, uh, having the money so that you can actually, if you get the authority to clean a property via, through a court or as you'll see, I proposed using municipal clean and lean or statute, which I believe we have the authority to piggyback on, but that's yet to be discussed and it is an open legal issue right now. But for either one of those, uh, you have to, the county has to have the funds available to go clean the property, whether you get a court order to clean it or whether you have, uh, action by the commission under a clean and lean ordinance to go clean it. You have to have those funds available to pay a contractor or have city, uh, have county employees available to do it. So there is that funding issue that goes with this. You can't get away from it. Otherwise you're just kind of, it's almost like a cruel trick to put it on the books and then not have the resources to enforce. Um, the, I tried to write an ordinance, uh, like I think I would want to have someone enforce against me on, which is basically the, it, it's working together. It's called the Livable Environment Ordinance for a reason because what it's really about, uh, is the environment of the community. I'm old, so I remember those commercials back in the nineteen seventies where there was, uh, the Native American man crying over the mess of litter and waste and pollution that he was living in. And it's akin to that. If you are someone who has to live in a community and your neighbors, commercial or residential, are treating their property that way. Uh, we can use things about on our, things on our property. Uh, we can ask the state to clean up their right of way, but we need the tools to deal with those private property owners who for whatever reason are not maintaining their property. It's obviously a real controversial issue because you have that push and pull of neighbors, uh, fighting amongst themselves essentially over, hey, this is my hobby. I keep old equipment. I keep old autos. I keep old washing machines. I collect them. And that's why I have three hundred of them sitting with weeds all around them on my property. You know, one's man's junk is another man's treasure, but if it's having an effect upon the neighboring property owners, then we have the authority and somewhat the obligation to do something about that. So that's what this is about. Um, in order to, I think we, we don't need to delay this for a long study period, but I think we do need the input of county employees who are the ones now that see these issues and have to deal with these issues, but don't have a lot of tools to deal with them. Um, I did a laundry list of the types of issues that we can enforce on. Uh, the general nuisances, um, are dumping, stockpiling or collecting of litter, rubbish, garbage, tires, debris, appliances or other material creating a public nuisance or a safety hazard. That's kind of your catch-all. The mechanical equipment is issue is the one where people simply collect old mechanical equipment that doesn't have any use and they stockpile it on their property. And that isn't a use that, that they should be able to do unless they have a approved special use for it. For example, a junkyard or something like that. Invasive nuisance plants and weeds, that's obviously something that is a very gray area. However, we all know when we see it, if we see a property that is entirely overgrown with weeds and nuisance plants, it, it is a problem because of its potential for being a safety hazard for both children playing in it and rodents and insects that can use it as a home. So that's why that's in there. Uh, open storage, which gets back to the, uh, general nuisances that states all trash, debris, garbage, litter or junk must be kept in an enclosed storage container, uh, or approved enclosure. Um, essentially saying you just can't store stuff on the, on the open ground without protecting it from other people's sight. And, and it's totally logical, but it's, we have nothing like that now. And, and that's in enforcement, what we look at is what are the worst problems? Uh, A, from complaints, B, if we have the resources to identify what the worst problems are and then go after those first. Get the low hanging fruit first. Not, don't go after the tough ones that are the close calls. Uh, that's something that you may never get to. Uh, there may be enough business in just those open and obvious problems. Uh, interference, uh, unclean film material, that's people just stockpiling, uh, concrete, uh, dirt, other construction debris on their property when they don't have a permit for that. And that is a use that you need to get permitted for. Uh, interference with the water course or wetland. In Albuquerque, we had a, a property owner construct an entire essentially diversion of a water course on their property by, uh, piling into Harris Arroyo right next to the freeway, uh, thousands of, of tons of concrete and debris. And he seriously had the potential of undermining the support zone freeway. The state and the feds would not spend the money or the time to try to correct it. But if the problem had occurred and the water course had been a flood through Harris Canyon and had taken out a bridge, then it would have been us who were suffering and we went after it in Berlio County and, and got an order from court for him to remove it. And ultimately he did, uh, after facing contempt charges in court, he then did remove it. The insect and rodent infestation in Harbor Ridge, what that's about is when you, if you create something that is creating a home for rodents and insects next door to, you're, someone next door to you is doing that, you don't, that is not a good thing. And, and it, it should not happen. Substandard buildings, this is a very detailed and long list that can be changed and modified to fit circumstances. The most important ones are really structural hazards and nuisance buildings on, on fifteen and sixteen. Those are kind of the guts of it. If you have something that is actually causing a, uh, public safety threat in a building, then we have the, uh, authority to correct that. So solving them, um, it has to first be cooperation. It has to first be engaging folks, going out and talking to them about what the problem is and asking them to fix it. That has to be the core of, of any program. You can also do things like have community cleanup days where volunteers offer to go help folks clean up their property. We can't do it for folks because it is an anti-dovation issue unless we have a court order and we get paid back for it. But we certainly can facilitate cleanup days where people help their neighbors and, and you create a clean, clean county environment. Uh, it, it has many benefits. Gallup had done a lot and they had done a lot in clean and lean and actually foreclosing on properties on the leads when there were about enough properties. And they found that it is an economic development driver as well as making the, the environment better because people, businesses and people are more likely to want to live in a place that. Because pe- businesses and people are more likely to want to live in a place that has, has those programs in place. So that's the, that type of, of activity. So the spectrum is you start with an attempt to work with the folks all the way up to getting a court order or a commission order to remove, uh, things from the property and we clean it up ourselves. We place, we file a lien against the property and then attempt to collect it. We can't, we have the right to foreclose. That's the most severe consequence, except for jail. It is, it is a situation where we can bring misdemeanor complaints against folks for nuisances and, and have the ultimate consequence is fines and jail time. The reason you do it though is to get compliance. Most of the time, there's no, no one goes to jail and no one goes, is charged with a large fine. The point is to get them to comply. But those are the tools we have as a county. The only one that is, that I am still researching and I'm going to work with, uh, New Mexico counties, counties on is has anyone used a municipal lien, clean and lien ordinance, statute gives them authority in a county? It seems there's nothing under the law preventing us from doing that because, as you know, we have all of the powers a municipality has unless it's specifically prohibited. And it is a very effective tool, especially for those types of things that are emergencies. So that's my rough synopsis. What I would like is some direction. I would like to, uh, get, uh, some discussion with county employees on what they see and how they see this being enforced. Uh, planning and zoning is already overwhelmed with the amount of workload they have. It's not something you can just place on their back. Uh, we do have solid waste ordinance and solid waste employees, but I don't think they have the resources either. So Leandro is going to have to, uh, come up with, with some plans, some funding for this if we're going to do it. And I don't know that it's available. So those are all the things that we have to flesh out. But I, I, and then some further feedback on, for example, we can include noise here. We can put a general noise ordinance into our police powers and have the sheriff's office enforce it. Uh, which is, you know, way much more practical because one of the things about enforcement officers, they're generally going to work nine, eight-five. And a lot of noise issues come up at night when they're not working. And then we only find out about it the next day. If you have a, um, basically it's like a disorderly type conduct charge because of the noise interfering with someone else's enjoyment of their land, that the sheriff's off deputies could go out and enforce. So that's one option. Uh, some municipalities have very complex noise ordinances with scientific measurement of decibel levels and so forth, which are extremely hard to enforce, um, and expensive to put into place. It's a whole nother enforcement realm, which, which I, I'm not recommending, but it is out there as an option. So with that, I stand for any questions. There are a couple of people here who mentioned to me that they'd like to, to, uh, make a statement about this if, if the board is so inclined.
Okay, first Commissioner, uh, so Mr. Chairman, um, I, I own a small farm. Um, and when you talk about, uh, stockpiling, uh, trash and stuff like that, I'm thinking about piles of manure that is put out for composting or for later use in the garden or in the field. Um, there are many farms in Taos County. How would we draft up an ordinance that would protect farmers? Um, but also make sure that these, uh, items don't become nuisances? Um, there's also a lot of fields in Taos now that have gone, uh, dormant or they're no longer being irrigated. Um, instead, a lot of peri dogs have entered into these fields. And so how would you address something like that? Um, I own four mini farms that go off at one o'clock, three o'clock in the morning. You know, let out weird noises and stuff like that when they see coyotes. How would you address something like that? Um, I, I own a couple of other farms that make noise when they see coyotes in the fields or in the yard. So just kind of wondering how all of that would fall into place with an ordinance like this.
Very carefully. Um, the problem is you, you identify, uh, the tip of the iceberg of those issues that we would have when you actually put an ordinance like this in place. The key is having a good training and a very, uh, person who's connected to the community enforcing this so that you're not going after things that shouldn't be an issue. Now, obviously, if you, if you live on a one acre lot and you've got a large pile of manure that sits there constantly, your neighbors may have an issue with that and that may need to be addressed. So one way you can do it is to, to identify the urban uses that you have in urban areas based upon lot size and apply different standards than farm and agricultural uses.
A couple of years ago, I, I had a, there was a, a field, a pile of field that went dry. And, um, the woman that owned it decided to divide it into seven parcels amongst her daughters and her sons. All of them, none of them live in Taos County, I think. The closest one is in Albuquerque. The one that lives in San Diego came by one day and asked me, um, how, when do you plan to get rid of your llamas? I had raised llamas. They make weird, screeky noises once in a while. And she said, I plan to move to Taos and you need to get rid of your llamas. Well, I've had my llamas for at least 15 years now. Um, I have no intention of selling them or getting rid of them just so that you can have peace and comfort in, in your new lot. She said, well, I'll take you to court if I have to. I never heard from her again, but, um, it, we'll get stuff like that once an ordinance like this is in place, I would imagine. And it, it changes the lifestyle, it changes the farming community, um, in Taos County. Uh, so we need to be very careful in how we draft these ordinances so that it doesn't create a very strict policing, uh, effect for those of us who wish to continue to do farming and, um, raising animals and gardeners and stuff like that.
I completely agree and, and that's why I think we do need to do some due diligence before we just throw this out there. Let it, let it do what, only find the problems later.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. President.
I think maybe the ordinance should state that you will put leans on the properties, that there's a procedure.
It has that in the last section.
Right, but it's, um, doesn't specifically state, it's, generalizes it, so it might be something you want to look at. Now, what happens when you can't reach a property owner? I, uh, have been attempting to clean up the property in Canyon. I wrote the lady a note, actually sent a card. Um, she's seven to 10 years on her back taxes, so she hasn't paid her taxes. Uh, she's never responded, uh, to just, you know, do a community cleanup, give permission to get on her property and clean up the mattresses. They're laying there on the ground, degrading the value of the property, surrounding property owners. Never heard from this woman, so what happens, can't reach someone.
Well, you take them to court and you, uh, notify them according to the legal requirements of, of doing that. And then if they default on it, then you would get an order from the court of default and get a judgment in your favor and, and go and clean it up. And then have a lien against the property from the court, uh, a judgment lien essentially. So, I mean, there, there are mechanisms, they're not good ones. But for absent landlords, that is, that is the solution.
And I, I like the idea that it would be someone who would work with the property owner, so it would never have to go that far. I know in some counties, they have environmental courts that are not punitive, but, you know, they mediate the issues. And so it would be nice to be able to have someone who could mediate. And I, we need this because, um, we can, we can't do anything now. Solid waste can't go in and ask someone to clean their property up, we have no authority. Um, apparently there is a property in Ranchitos that is just filthy. And, uh, no trespassing signs, they weren't able to go on the property. But, but there's just a few of these extreme cases and we have no authority now. We have no ordinance to clean up the neighborhoods, increase our property values, do it as an economic driver like you suggested. So, um, I do agree, we have to be careful, but we need something. We needs, we need to have some authority.
Commissioner Boykin, I've been waiting.
I'm not, I'm not patient, no. Um, yeah, I, I agree, I agree Commissioner, I think this tool that we really need. But I also agree with you, I think it's worth putting ordinance on the book that you don't enforce and not to do it at all. And so if we're going to do this, I would want a commitment from this board and the administration that we're going to pick, you know, five or six of the really bad ones, prioritize those and go after them each year. Um, you know, obviously that's going to entail some thought on, on the Amgro's part, as you said, and, uh, talking to different department heads and figuring out who would, uh, who would go about this. Uh, we certainly have enough money in reserves to handle the cleanup and with some assurance that we would get paid back ultimately with a judgment lien, uh, once you had that court order. Why would you need the lien and lien with municipalities to get the judgment lien?
Well, you have basically what it is, a judgment lien takes you as long as the lawsuit takes. You can go in for injunctive relief, but it has to be pretty severe circumstances for the court to get on it real quickly. If it's an emergency, public safety, obviously that's the way to go. The other thing, but what the clean and lien does, what municipalities have the right to do is I would bring a motion to you through staff and say, this property needs to be cleaned and leaned right now. So it shortens the process because it's in your hands. And obviously it doesn't get done unless it's really severe because you would not act if it's some minor thing. So you, you get to say, we're going to clean that and we're going to pay for it and we're going to place a lien on the property. And you have that authority through statute. But there's no county clean and lien statute, so it's a little bit of a stretch there that we have to take our general authority that we have, just like municipalities have, and utilize that. So I want to see if anybody has in fact enacted that so that we, we wouldn't be the test case. Or we can choose to be the test case, but we need to know that going in.
Yeah, well, that would be a good tool, that would be good to know. Um, on those volunteer situations, which I think would arise, uh, the solid waste, they could probably, they could put in a dumpster or something, right? Without violating anti-donation?
I think, I think we can facilitate that, uh, I mean, we will work on that. One of the components may be, uh, so, so as soon as you get into this, you realize real quickly a lot of people that have these problems are poor and they have mental health issues. And that's just an unfortunate reality that is a piece of this. And so if they're poor, that is an exception to the anti-donation clause for the indigent. So you can have some, you can have those assistances for those who can't afford to clean it themselves. Now, obviously, you want to use that very judiciously because people will be claiming poverty pretty, very quickly.
Yeah, you have to establish it. And we do have a lot of places that people live that are really not habitable by legal standards and we could not go after all of those nor would we want to. So it, we would have to be selective in our enforcement. Um, but I do like it as a tool, if we feel as though we can back it up as a county and follow through. So appreciate the work. The Army Corps wouldn't do anything about that situation in Burno, huh?
Nobody would, it was like, oh no, you local government, you go, you go after it.
Thank you. As, as we talk about this, uh, proposed ordinance, I am thinking about the, uh, there's a, on the, uh, Indians Taos County in the south end, uh, the guy that has the, I don't know if it's on BLM land or not, recently he parked a, uh, mobile woman uh, right on the highway in Eastman, it's on the highway in Eastman, and it's lit up at night. I'm not sure that anybody lives in it or not. Um, once in a while he'll take a live, uh, round, an animal of some sort, farm animal, hang it live from the tree and, um, it'll just be there, you know, and people stopping by to look at it. Um, then he finally kills it and leaves it there on the ground. Kind of really weird stuff that goes on in that little area and, and nobody's done anything about it. Um, I think he's got it out for BLM because they tried to take him out of their BLM areas, but nonetheless, he still continues to do a lot of stuff. And he's also in fact throwing a lot of junk into an Arroyo that eventually does pour water into the Rio Grande that's only about a thousand feet away from that.
And part of this issue is working with our neighbors. And, and you know, we have Taos, we have the city of Taos and we have, we have, um, other neighbors such as State Highway and, and so forth that we need to be partnering with. And we need to at least start that process so that we, we be able to work with them so that they can keep their environment clean as well.
So about equipment, uh, Mr. Corbata, do we have the equipment to do demolition? Where the county staff could do it? Or like Mr. Radio suggested, you hire a contractor to demolish?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I don't, we have the capacity to do small things. I definitely wouldn't die to take our road crew, for example, and have them do a demolition on a large scale. That probably won't be the appropriate use of their equipment and, and their skills. So, um, it might have to be case by case basis. Obviously, as Mr. Radio mentioned, this whole ordinance has a cost and everything about it has a cost to it. And so, um, this is broad, Mr. Radio mentioned, it's kind of a framework for us to work on. But I do want the board to keep in mind that everything has a cost to it. And if we take things out, um, that are the most expensive, then we might not be able to put them back in later as we start curing some of the easier problems. But we can't do it all on our own, you know? We would need some help probably from contractors as we get into much bigger problems that are out there in the county. And we know we have plenty of problems in our county.
So the foreclosure, that's the harshest, the lien is like, so if you were to foreclose on a property, then that means we take it, it becomes our property. Is that correct or how does that work?
Um, it, it basically means you, municipal leans do have a high priority. So let's say you have a piece of property that has a mortgage and has other debt associated with it, then it goes through the normal, what is the priority to pay off of that property? But generally speaking, you, you make that analysis before you file your foreclosure action to make sure that you're going to get paid back what you have, you have, uh, spent on the property. You don't attempt to foreclose something where there's no money in the property. You know, um, so is it okay with the board that if Leandro and I are working, then work with staff and get some comments?
And I, I, enforcement of this is a department of its own, I don't know where that's.
So that's what we'll work on and we'll bring back, raise it back to you as soon as we can. Uh, there are some, uh, there are, we do have some powers as a county under state law. What I can do, depending on how long this is taking, because there are some citizens that have been complaining for quite some time. And, and I will sort out what we have to enforce only through an ordinance or what we have, uh, the ability to do just directly under state law, see if there's anything we can do prior to this getting passed.
So Mr. Chairman, I'm sure, if you're, it's kind of wanting to hear from him on enforcement. Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Corbata. Um, yeah, I was following this as well. Um, there's no question that we have BLM issues and trash and debris and abandoned vehicles and mobile homes and things that truly need to be removed. Uh, whether that be at the county's expense to be collected at a later time or of course through a court, which is something that I think should be explored.
that I think should be explored here in order and then a violation that would become a criminal penalty in itself perhaps might be another way to do this. As far as the enforcement side, if it is criminal, obviously, it needs to fall under law enforcement, I think we could all agree with that. If it were going to be a civil penalty violation, where it would be essentially a lien or foreclosure of property, that would lean more towards, you know, code enforcement, planning department, whoever. Whichever way this decided to go, I think the Officer Schperff should be an integral part of that, just for the safety of the community, the neighbors. There's going to be accusations of complaints and finger pointing, well, you know, my neighbor was causing this problem for me and those kind of things. And, you know, it's going to have to be monitored, addressed, and provisioned measures put into place, whether that neighbor is responsible for, you know, initiating this or not. So those are just some of my first thoughts about this. Perhaps taking this a bite at a time in looking at abandoned vehicles and trash homes, mobile homes especially, exploring the opportunities of where do we take those, how do we dispose of them? I'm not sure where a mobile home can be taken. I haven't looked either. Cars, I think we could probably come up with a salvage and maybe utilize county resources to take those to Alamosa or to the Albuquerque area, to salvage yards. The problem that comes into that, that we run into quite often, is in my experience the last many years, people come forward and say, well, I bought this property and sold cars there, it hasn't been registered in forever, I don't want it gone, but the salvage won't take it because I don't have a title to present to them, which is law in New Mexico as well as Colorado now. We used to just simply send the Alamosa or Colorado Springs, can't do that anymore, they don't accept vehicles. So, you know, we run into those type of things, and now we're getting into that area where a motor vehicle has to cooperate and play nice on these type of things. There would be a certain delay and cost involved for the county to try and get a lien on that vehicle somehow lawfully and then have to have the title into the county's name to then even dispose of it. I'm not sure how to get around that or how to make that timely process short enough that this could really work smoothly for us. As far as in support of this, guys, I'm in support of this, or at least some portions of weeds, the plants, things like that, and a lot of nasty looking properties around, and somebody should be at least promoting that or something yearly. Trash debris, washing machines, as was mentioned, I think those are a little different animal than the larger scale homes. So that's my thoughts. Any questions? This is my other opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else?
I, I agree, Mr. Chairman. I think that it was an invasion steps, not trying to push it all at once.
It's very expensive in my experience through my other position. You can find somebody guilty and call for the cleanup and the demolition, it's diluted. So I'm, there's, there's got to be a lot more to get to where you can actually do it. And it just, in the legal world, it doesn't have it. And you spend a lot of staff time getting that.
And, Mr. Chairman, I echo what the sheriff said. I take this on because it is the right, the right thing to attempt to help out these types of situations, but it is fraught with difficult issues. Each case itself, as I said, when you're dealing with a mentally ill person who's a hoarder and, and they're, they're indigent, you've got a real big issue, difficult issue to deal with. As I mentioned, is it, is it the commission's pleasure to hear from any of the folks who are here? I don't know how many are here.
Well, I just want to say, relating to the invasive use of plants and weeds, so there has been a weed group forming, and this is, we need this. This gives us some enforcement on the weeds. We've got crop losses because of weeds that go into someone's field and contaminate the field. So actually having a weed meeting October 10th at two at the Cow Soil and Water Conservation to formulate a weed group of all entities. But this, I like this, and if you can find a way to include a noise, noise language, I think we definitely need that included, if that's a way to do that, add it to this Even though this word, let's say this word of pass, the fact that we are, are taking action sends a message to the community and may result in people cleaning up things on their own rather than face criminal or civil penalties. And the comment I have for the sheriff is that we had had something like this on the books, maybe we could have averted something up in Amalia.
Go ahead and come forward so the microphone will pick you up.
I would like to know, I don't understand the protocols, so this is just questions. I have information and ideas. Do I put it before the commission and you?
Scarecrow.
Okay, that's basically it. I'm glad that there's progress here and that the noise, do you feel that the noise ordinance can be part of this? That's all I need to know, so thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Ms. Romero, did you have something to say on this, or?
No, I'm just happy that our county government is taking the steps to clean up. How many houses do we see throughout the county where people save their first car they owned in 1900 and they keep accumulating them and making it look like a ocean? They don't need to do that. A nation will give them an idea that, listen, clean up. No one knows that. It makes our county look bad. Pictures look like they serve or, when, when the Republic, it doesn't make sense. There are, unfortunately, some people who see that they can use a lien for, but in one, and we see that, that's not fair for everybody else. It pollutes the surrounding areas, it creates remnants, another situation where there's no, a made place for selling drugs or anything. It just doesn't look good. You're taking wonderful steps. Make sure county must, maybe have to date, clean it up.
Thank you very much.
Make a good job.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item 14 is cause County Board of Commissioners make a being closed session. This is due to the performance evaluation regarding the county matters and may be discussed in closed session under the Open Meetings Act exemption, 10-15-1H2, which allows for discussion of limited personnel matters. Pleasure, lip position. Motion to go into session. All second, Mr. Chairman. Motion to second to go into closed session under the Open Meetings Act exemption, 10-15-1H2, which allows for discussion of limited personnel matters regarding the performance evaluation of the matter. Quick call roll.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Yes. Commissioner Blankenberger?
Yes.
Chairman O'Neal?
Yes.
Chairman O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenberger?
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 Yes.
Chairman O'Neal?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Sum, second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Thank you all.